This board meeting of the Board of Education for January 25th, 2022 is called to order. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on has been posted on the PPS website under the Board and Meetings tabs. The meeting is being streamed, live streamed, streamed live on PPS TV Services website and on Channel 28, and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to everyone here. On January 3rd, the Oregon Health Authority and Oregon Department of Education released a school health advisory to be in effect from January 3rd through January 31st in order to help with the recent surge of COVID cases due to the Omicron variant. These extra mitigation efforts are in place to help reduce the spread of COVID so that districts can prioritize in-person learning for students. The guidance includes the recommendation that schools hold events such as conferences, meetings, and fundraisers online rather than in person. In order to comply with that recommendation, for the month of January, all board meetings will be closed to the public. We know it's preferable to meet fully in person, but we want to do our part in helping support the effort to prioritize in-person learning for students. Next, the board will vote on the consent agenda, and bear with me for just a moment while I pull that up. Members, if there are any items you'd like to pull for discussion, we'll set those aside for discussion and a vote at the end of the meeting. Ms. Bradshaw, are there any changes to the consent agenda?
No.
Board members, are there any items you'd like to pull from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved.
Thank it.
Directors Green and Brim Edwards moved, and I believe Director Holland seconded it. The adoption of the consent agenda. Is there any board discussion on the consent agenda? And Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
I want to also mention, thank you Director Scott and Director Constem for attending virtually, and Student Representative Weinberg will be joining us about an hour late tonight, so everybody knows they're in attendance and joining virtually. Directors Scott and Constem.
I'm...
Go ahead.
I just said hello. Good evening.
Good evening. The board will now vote on Resolutions 6433 through 6436. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? The consent agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero, and Student Representative Weinberg is absent.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to recognize and thank Director Green for some of those contract allocations tonight that came out of his committee for managing and bringing those forward with staff alignment.
Thank you so much. I wish I could actually take some of the credit, but it was really the hard work of the staff and the work that they were doing back in October and November, really bringing attention to certain things that really helped to get this across the line. So I really just want to take a moment to appreciate our budget staff for really the hard work and effort that they put into this, so. But on their behalf, since my guy's not here right now, but we've got Ms. Claire and we got the soup here, on the behalf of their amazing team, I'll say thank y'all and appreciate it.
Yes, and thank you for your leadership on that committee as well, because it takes all of us pulling in the same direction to move work like that. So now we turn to student and public comment. Before we begin, I'd like to review our guidelines for public comment. First, the board thanks anyone here for taking the time to attend the meeting and providing comments. Public input informs and improves our work, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. I might have to separate you two at some point.
It's the soup. It's the soup.
So we look forward to hearing your thoughts and your reflections and your concerns. Our responsibility as a board is to actively listen, and to that end, I'd ask each of us to give our full attention to the people in front of us, virtually. Our board office may follow up on board-related issues raised during public testimony. We request that complaints about individual employees be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. And if you have additional items you'd like to provide to the board or superintendent, we ask you to mail them to publiccomment@pps.net. That's publiccomment@pps.net. And please make sure when you begin your comment, you clearly state your first name and spell your last name. You'll have three minutes to speak, and you'll hear a sound after three minutes, which means it's time to conclude your comments. Ms. Bradshaw, do we have anyone signed up for student or public comment?
Yes, we have both. We have Ada Crandall.
Good evening, board members. My name is Ada Crandall, C-R-A-N-D-A-L-L, and I am a sophomore at Grant High School. I am here tonight because I'm extremely concerned about your proposed relocation of Harriet Tubman Middle School. It's finals week right now, and I should be studying for my algebra test tomorrow morning, but instead, here I am at a school board meeting, begging you to do what is right and not displace students to accommodate the expansion of fossil fuel infrastructure in the middle of a climate crisis. In preparation for this, I spent some time looking into PPS's bullying policy, because here's the thing: I think the Oregon Department of Transportation is a bully, and that you all are bystanders doing nothing about it. I don't know what you all were taught, but what I learned in your school system is that when you see someone being picked on, you're supposed to stand up for them. So why is it that when ODOT's proposed freeway expansion is literally cutting into Tubman's backyard and threatening to displace hundreds of students, your response is to give in and let it happen? The PPS website says that bullying is strictly prohibited and shall not be tolerated, and to me, it seems like you're breaking your own rule. Why aren't you modeling to students what it means to be an active ally and stand up against injustice? As a former Tubman student, I know the pollution at Tubman is dangerous. No student should have to worry about if the air they're breathing at recess will one day cause asthma or lung cancer, but the decision to move the school rather than fight the freeway expansion follows the same short-sighted line of thinking that started the climate crisis in the first place. Yes, you can move students away from the direct threat of pollution, but you cannot move them away from the life of climate disasters they're inheriting as a result of your decision to support fueling this crisis without even making ODOT study the alternatives. ODOT has bullied you into thinking this freeway expansion is inevitable, but it's not. PPS could avoid all the community disruption associated with displacing Tubman and potentially King Elementary by simply forcing ODOT to consider not building the freeway. The project just lost a key federal approval last week, remains tied up in multiple lawsuits, and is currently $500 million short. These recent updates are a massive step forward in efforts to stop the expansion, efforts that for some reason, PPS seems to be completely ignoring. I urge you to join in with community groups demanding that ODOT fully study the environmental impact of the Rose Quarter freeway expansion, which would include studying congestion pricing, an alternative that would reduce congestion and pollution rather than increasing it. At the last board meeting I attended, I asked each of you to raise your hand if climate justice was important to you, and as I remember with striking clarity, everyone had their hand up. This is your chance to follow through on that promise. Don't just raise your hands, raise your voices and raise your standards. If you truly value climate justice, you will not settle for the displacement of students to accommodate the expansion of fossil fuel infrastructure into the backyard of a middle school. If you truly care about climate justice, you will not let ODOT get away with this and destroy my generation's future. Tonight, I urge you to stand true to the values that you teach students and dare to imagine a better world. Stand up for us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tupac Del Rosio.
Hi, hello. Ana Del Rosio and Tupac Tainka here. Is it okay if I go before Tupac at his request?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair to pass, Vice Chair Scott and members of the board, my name is Ana Del Rosio. I am a mother of two students at Bridger Elementary in Southeast Portland. I am here tonight with respect to Southeast enrollment balancing to urge PPS leadership to refocus its efforts on ensuring that every school in Southeast has the resources and support it needs to close the achievement gap for Black, Indigenous, Latinx, AAPI, and low-income children in our communities. Families at Bridger are calling for focused and accountable conversations about investing in Harrison Park neighborhood students and targeted financial and staffing commitments for Black and Indigenous students in all schools. We need everything from support staff to counselors and family support, critical wraparound services. This need is getting lost in SEGC's efforts to divide dual-language immersion students against Black and Native students in neighborhood programs, invisibilizing and ignoring Native Spanish-speaking students in DLI programs who are Black, Indigenous, and AAPI. No one seems to be asking the tough questions about what guarantees the district will give to those families regardless of where their PPS middle school will end up being. These broad strokes perpetuate a harmful tactic of white supremacy and utilitarianism, which would sacrifice BIPOC students in majority-white schools in favor of an oversimplified, fabricated binary of Black versus white. Esteemed Professor John A. Powell refers to targeted universalism as operationalizing belonging. Each group's differences must be taken into account. Targeted universalism is designed through careful consideration of positionality and situatedness. It is inclusive of all regardless of differences. It expands the "we." Current efforts at PPS have veered far from Professor Powell's take on targeted universalism and have instead fallen into a scarcity mindset where outcomes are zero-sum and communities are othered and divided against each other. Recent comments by SEGC members targeting families in DLI programs as outsiders, taking away from legitimate neighborhood programs, is xenophobic and contradicts PPS's race and social justice framework. Dismantling the Spanish DLI focus at Kellogg will be an utter capitulation by PPS to this rhetoric and sentiments. This cannot be tolerated. We must center the lived experience of students and families and incorporate more teachers and principals into the decision-making for SEGC. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tupac Amartainka, and this is what I wrote. Chair to pass, Vice Chair Scott and members of the board, my name is Tupac Amartainka. I'm a student here at Bridger Elementary in fourth grade. I'm here to testify about what Bridger means to me, to ask you not to ignore Brown, Latinx families' demand. Feel safer what I know about things that are going on, going to happen. We had zero clue that Bridger might change. We didn't know if it was a joke that was scary. The events in COVID and distance learning were really tough for me. I was really confused and unhappy. It just wasn't right. Bridger Elementary is not just my school. It means everything to me. I've had so many fun times. I'm so happy to finally be here. I have so many friends. I play with them at recess. I play tag with my amigas and Julia. I don't want to go to any other school. We are learning a lot. We are learning about Native peoples and how they were forced by white Christianity that they were only nine federally recognized tribes when all should be recognized, that they were forced out of their houses, torn from their family to go to boarding schools, had to cut their hair, wear appropriate clothes, and were not allowed to speak their language. I think this relates to what's happening at PPS today, because I think the government needs to stop telling brown people where to live or to go to school, or what languages we get to speak at school. I don't feel good when people in the government use their power against us. I wish people in the government would listen to families and use their power to make things better, not worse. I'm only nine years old. Respectfully, I would rather be playing video games with my friends. I want, right now, but I want to sacrifice my free time to stand up for myself and others. I want every school in Portland to get more support for Black, Native, Latinx, Asian-American, Pacific Islander, and low-income kids, no matter what building they're in. My wish for schools is to be united, not divided. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Erin Cruz.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
We can hear you. Hello?
Hello, good evening. My name is Erin Cruz. I am a student within PPS, and I attend Harriet Tubman Middle School. My goal is to attend Morehouse College in Atlanta, Georgia. I feel Grant will help me prepare for college. In that case, I was wondering if you guys would be willing or able to expand the high school or school boundaries for Grant High School. If you are not aware, Grant has over 2,000 students, and my neighborhood school, Jeff, only has 600. I know it is a big ask to change the school boundaries, but it will be a lot, there are a lot of kids like me trying to set themselves in a place where they feel they can be stable. Could you guys please take into consideration that there are a lot of Black and African-American students that don't have the resources to be where they want to be? This is a big ask again, but still, I would like to take this into consideration. Are there any questions that you guys would like to ask?
This is your time for us to hear from you and your thoughts.
Thank you. That's just all I wanted to ask and request.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have Nemo Cruz. Nemo's on her way over from the attendee section.
Hello, can everyone hear me? Good?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nema Cruz, C-R-E-W-S. My pronouns are she/her, and I am a student within PPS. My goal is to attend Spelman College in Atlanta, Georgia. I feel Grant will help me prepare for college, because they have great AP classes, and they also give harder work unlike other high schools. But there's only one thing about that. Grant doesn't allow people outside of that neighborhood to attend their school anymore. I also noticed that Grant is a majority-white school. There are 71.1% white people at Grant High School and 5.8% African-American. My best friend's brother tried to get into Grant High School, but they didn't accept him because he doesn't live in that neighborhood and because he's Black. I also want to go to Grant High School because I want to be a lawyer, and they have a great debate team. I just don't think it's fair. All I ask is that you guys let people out of that neighborhood to attend Grant High School so everyone can get the equal opportunities they need. I also want to be a professional dancer when I grow up. I'd like to be a Jefferson dancer. What I ask from you guys and from Jefferson High School is that not only me, but lots of other people as well are able to attend Jefferson High School, are able to be a Jefferson dancer even though they don't attend that school. I really hope that you guys take what I'm saying into consideration and make some things happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have Craig Wilhelm.
Craig, can you hear us?
I got you now. I got you now. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my apologies. I was so excited to hear from all of the students, so that was great. Good evening. My name is Craig Wilhelm, W-I-L-H-E-L-M. My pronouns are he and him, and I am Oregon's civilian aide to the Secretary of the Army. I am here today to kindly urge the school board to rescind Resolution Number 4503 adopted on 24 October 2011 regarding the equal access to military counter-recruiters in Portland public high schools. It sets a biased rule that destroys diversity, equity, and inclusion. The resolution states, quote, "The district encourages students to serve their country in a variety of ways, including military service, the Peace Corps, AmeriCorps, and service with other organizations, but should ensure that students who are interested in a career in the military are fully aware of all aspects involved in military service, and in furtherance of this, should allow counter-recruiters." First, the flaw here is the resolution in the paragraph singles out the military. Why wouldn't students who are interested in attending the Peace Corps or the University of Portland, or, sorry, the University of Oregon or Portland State also be made fully aware of all aspects involved in attending these institutions, and in furtherance of this, should allow counter-recruiters for these organizations just the same? Believe me, I am all for a student and parents to have the tools and information at their disposal to decide what career path is best for them and their child, but singling out one service organization, in this case, the military, over the others and not apply the same rationale and counter-criteria to all organizations, academic institutions, trade schools, et cetera, is frankly reckless and discriminatory. Second, the resolution lists the counter-recruiter organizations that the school district might use, and with an established practice of providing information to students about military service and career alternatives. Are all of you familiar with these listed counter-recruiting agents? Have you reviewed their mission and their memberships? What is the quote-unquote "established practice" of vetting them and how often? And who determines what information is being disseminated and its accuracy? One of these organizations listed, the Americans Friends Service Committee, is a religious society that claims it works for peace. Since when does a public high school or public school district take counsel from a religious organization? Another, Veterans for Peace, claims on their website that military policy pressures some recruiters to adopt unethical practices in order to make mission. Is there specific systemic evidence of this? And look at the unethical recruiting behavior made headlines in academic institutions where bad recruiters accepted parents' bribes to get their children to the freshman roles. There can certainly be bad apples in all organizations. Today, I assure you, the majority of Army talent managers are not like that and are looking for top management and future young leaders who want to serve their country, learn a trade, receive educational benefits, and be a part of something greater than themselves. Our leaders and soldiers do not wish for war. It is ingrained in training that war always should be the last resort. Every day, I assure you, soldiers are working in our communities, supporting hospitals affected by staffing shortages.
Mr. Wilhelm, I'm going to ask you to conclude your comments as your three minutes is up.
Yes, I will. In closing, I ask you to repeal the resolution. It singles out the military as requiring counter-recruiters where other organizations do not. Please level the playing field. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present my case to you with sincerest and humble gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Ashley Brooks.
Hi, thank you, board, for listening to me. My name is Ashley Brooks, B-R-O...
Are we able to get Ms. Brooks back into the meeting?
I'm working on it. Ms. Brooks, if you see, there you go. Yes.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry about that. We had a little technical glitch on the end.
That's okay. I taught online for a year. I know how it goes. So hello, my name is Ashley Brooks, B-R-O-O-K-S. My pronouns are she/her. I'm a seventh and eighth grade social studies teacher at Fabian School in Northeast Portland. I teach at a school that is 72% students of color, where the majority of students are historically underserved and has one of the highest homeless populations. Superintendent, I wrote to you and others at the BESC on the eve of our return from winter break. I wrote about how overwhelmed I was and how my workload was too high to complete everything I needed to do during my contract hours. I did not receive a single response to my email. Weeks later, I am more stressed and overwhelmed than ever. Many days, I am planning lessons, grading assignments, and emailing assistants to my student outside of my contract hours. To be clear, I and many other faculty and staff members in this district are working hours and hours every week for free. The impact of this stressful situation is felt by my students as I am unable to be the best teacher I can be when I am exhausted. During the six days we were in the building before going online for two weeks, we had huge numbers of staff and students out. I don't know if you're aware, but it is very difficult for a school to run smoothly with so many people out. As so many students were out sick or quarantined, it was necessary to make two versions of every assignment, one for those in class and another that students could figure out on their own at home. Now that we are back in person, I anticipate this will happen again as we are still in the recent COVID surge. In addition to all of this, I have a mountain of assignments and assessments to work through before grades are due on Monday. I cannot give meaningful feedback or adequately assess each of my 127 students within my contract hours, and thus will be doing much of this outside of my contract hours, working for free, as many teachers do every day all over our district. Our entire educational system is built on the unpaid labor of countless teachers and other school staff. Every year, and PPS is taxing, but this year is so much more so. All I want to do is be the best teacher I can be for my students, but without the time, I cannot. I am far from the only teacher who does not have the time to do all that is needed. TOSAs, special teachers, sped and ESL teachers, school admin, and many others are subbing in classrooms and doing the work of EAs and pairs in some instances during their contract hours. When this happens, all of these people must work outside of their contract hours in order to complete their job duties to make each day meaningful for our students. When we are stretched so thin, our students suffer. The lack of empathy and understanding for those of us who work with students every day is utterly appalling and leads to the lack of time and resources that we need to do our jobs and give our students the education they deserve. The district can begin to rectify this situation by listening to those of us who are in the buildings with students every day. We have been telling you what we need for years. A big part of what we need is reduced workloads, more planning time, and more time to collaborate with our colleagues. We need more teachers, guest teachers, and more school-based staff in order to achieve this. If we continue on this trajectory, I can guarantee you that more and more teachers will leave this district and things will get worse for our students. No one wants to work in an environment where they are not only unappreciated but unpaid for much of their labor. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. We have Benjamin Rodriguez.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Benjamin Mendoza Rodriguez, M-E-N-D-O-Z-A-R-O-D-R-G-U-Z. Sorry about the camera. This is my son, Joshua. I just want to show him, that way you guys put a face of what we kind of feel in and boring on this. I'm the proud parent of two kids enrolled at the PPS Dual Immersion Program, both at Bridger. I want to tell you that PPS can do better than what is happening now at Southeast. It seems that every week, there's a new challenge in the school plan. We met with the board members in December, and we tried to make our voice heard, but it seems like no one hears us. We know that change needs to happen. We stand with the Black and Native communities. We need more support and attention by PPS. We believe all of our communities who have been neglected by PPS need to stand together and support each other. What we need is to be reunited with our community, the siblings, and the teachers at Kellogg. We compromise so all of us could benefit in some way. This process you have doesn't take into account our difference in voices and experience and leaves higher-income neighborhoods and wider schools without having any of this appeal. Listen to the community. Listen to the families. Listen to the teachers. And use this info for your decisions, not just the numbers by plot and analytics. Our lives are here in your hands. We understand that you guys got to make some moves. The proposal for E2 doesn't take into consideration Bridger into going into Kellogg. They're just sending them somewhere else. We asked again and again to be at Kellogg, and you guys are not hearing this. We feel distrust now by PPS because promises have been broken again and again and again, and we feel that we were not being heard. And we feel that we were not being heard. You guys have a Southeast coalition telling you- telling you what to do, but we never said none of these things. We're asking not to do this as parents, as teachers, and yet you guys are moving forward with these things. They're not bought yet, but it seems like it's going that way. You guys speaking to- of, uh, of, uh, unification and, uh, but your actions are saying otherwise. I agree at Bridger that most of the overcrowded and outdated school in the district. But we need to figure out how to do this without creating more havoc than what it is already. The kids are going through enough already as it is with COVID. Especially now with the new variant. People and teachers are getting sick, and kids are getting sick. Please consider this on- on- onto the boarding and decision that you guys are doing today. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, you're on mute, Mr. Brown.
Sorry about that. Hello, my name is Tyler Brown, B-R-O-W-N. I use he/him pronouns. Uh, I'm the Vice President of the PTA at Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Elementary School. Uh, we've been meeting with members of the Board over the past six weeks or so about relocation to Harry Tubman Middle School, and we've been sharing ideas back and forth, which has been great. I think we can all agree that the community engagement is crucial to finding equitable solutions that serves first and foremost to underserved communities that are typically left out of these conversations. That said, we haven't heard anything from PPS about the community engagement since- since December, when they dropped a meeting on us with four days' notice right before the holidays and no childcare or other accommodations provided. Since that time, any and all engagement with our school community has been facilitated by our PTA. We absolutely understand the impact that COVID has had on the district's everyday functioning, and I want to offer some grace there. But the district hasn't made even the most basic effort to hear from families who aren't privileged. The PTAs are- the PTA are willing- are- are filling in the gaps for the district, putting the labor on the burden of the community over and over. I want to emphasize how crucial it is to speak directly with families potentially affected by moving Harry Tubman Middle School. And to the end, I wanted to- I wanted to draw attention to an idea Director Lowry and Director Hollins shared during the Intergovernmental Affairs Meeting last week that we feel would be very helpful. Their idea was to create a community working group for the Board to get- to solicit feedback from. That would help center the voices and needs of African-American and Latino families to ensure their opinions are heard loudly and clearly as this process moves forward on an accelerated timeline. We believe that having a community input group that the Board could consult through out the process that's up to speed on where things are and that's able to provide useful feedback quickly will be helpful to- would help the Board come up with solutions that's equitable and supported by the affected communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. So, uh, thank you all for your comments. Feel free to connect with the Senior Board Manager, Roseanne Powell, if you have something specifically you'd like to follow up with, with the Board or the Board Office. Student Representative is joining us a little bit later, a little bit after seven. Superintendent, would you like to go ahead to share your report this evening?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Directors. When I started this, Directors Scott and Constam. I think we're pulling up a few slides for you. Okay, well, while the impact of the pandemic the last two years has been taxing on all of us, the last few weeks in particular have really stretched and challenged our community. We see in the surge of COVID cases and this Omicron variant, many people in our community have gotten sick or needed to quarantine themselves. And this hasn't made it impossible, in all cases, for, uh, folks to come to work, folks, students to come to school. Since our last regular meeting, we've had to make some necessary decisions about transitioning a limited number of our schools into remote learning, some of which started back in person yesterday. Our goal remains keeping a careful eye on the health and safety of our employees and students, prioritizing in-person learning as much as possible. I want to make sure and continue taking every opportunity at the same time to appreciate, because I was a longtime para classroom teacher and principal, making sure to continue to take every opportunity to appreciate our school leaders, educators, and the many support staff at PPS for their continued adaptability and dedication to our students and their families. And I have a remote that's not advancing. There we go. And our ability to maintain our eye on in-person learning is a direct result of our continued efforts to minimize the risk of COVID-19 in our schools for students and staff. And so, even though a number of our schools have had to transition to temporary- temporary distance learning, over 85% of our PPS schools have remained in-person this calendar year. And we know that the transmission of COVID-19 depends in large part on local rates, the number of people vaccinated, and mitigation measures in place to prevent transmission. Here at PPS, our measures continue to include, there seems to be some ambiguity about everything that we've had in place, but it includes regular contact and guidance from public health experts for our health and safety decisions, continuing to make accessible COVID-19 vaccine and boosters for students, staff, and families. We're grateful that 98% of our staff have been fully vaccinated and that we have a high vaccination rate in Multnomah County across every age group. We continue implementing the state's requirement that adults and students must wear masks at all times, regardless of vaccination status. We continue to stockpile and have close to 100,000 KN95 masks today that we continue to replenish and make available to PPS staff and students. And lastly, we continue to partner with Oregon Health Authority to offer regular COVID-19 testing opportunities for both students and staff. That includes symptomatic testing, weekly screening testing, and free tri-weekly COVID-19 testing site for staff right here at the central office. In addition to these mitigation measures, you've heard this before, but just to remind everybody, we've installed more than 5,500 HEPA filters, including in every learning space in the district and cafeteria. That was a $3.9 million investment. We also upgraded our existing air filters in each school's mechanical systems to a MERV-13 hospital standard, which is a higher level of filtration and provides another layer of protection against COVID-19 transmission. And I know you've heard this before, Directors. So, PPS has remained assertive in implementing our health and safety measures that will minimize the risk of COVID-19. It will create the most controlled learning environment possible, and we'll continue making necessary adjustments along the way as the ever-changing guidance also changes so that in-person learning can take place. Onto other topics. By keeping our schools open, our students have the opportunity for the fullest possible school experience. And in addition to the in-person teaching and learning, this has also meant that our students can engage in other activities, clubs, and extracurriculars. It is in these spaces that we know our students are reconnecting, finding joy in all the traditional school activities, routines, and traditions that have often been disrupted over the last couple of years. As an example, this weekend, our PPS high schools dominated the We the People High School Constitutional Regional Competition. So, we're so proud that McDaniel High School won three of the six-unit awards, while four PPS high schools have now advanced to the state finals on February 5th. Cleveland, Franklin, Grant, and Lincoln High Schools will be going to the state finals with the top teams heading to Nationals in Washington, DC. And as Directors know, PPS high school teams have won more national titles than any high school in the country since the competition started more than 30 years ago. And I have a feeling that this streak will continue. So, congratulations to this year's Constitution teams. Here's another example of the ways that our students are thriving. Last week, in an annual tradition, 14 of the state's best basketball teams, including nine PPS PIL boys and girls teams, put on quite the shows at Franklin High School. I really enjoyed watching many of these matchups, and I know that for Marshall Haskins, our athletic director, staff and students playing on this day means a lot more than just basketball. It's a way to honor the person and the legacy of Dr. King as well. And I'm excited to catch a few more games this upcoming month as PIL prepares to represent PPS at the state championships in March. And similar to our Constitution teams, I'm optimistic, and I have a feeling that our basketball teams, both the girls and the boys, will do really well and bring home a state championship. And other good news. Later on tonight's Board's agenda, Dr. Renard Adams, our Chief of Research Assessment and Accountability, and Margaret Calvert, our Regional Superintendent of Secondary Schools in Multiple Pathways, will join us to share more about Oregon's just-released graduation outcomes. And here's the spoiler. For PPS students, 84.4% of the class of 2021 earned a cla- a high school diploma within four years. An impressive result. This represents a steady increase for the 12th year in a row. PPS students continue to graduate at a higher and increased rate than their peers in Multnomah County and across the state of Oregon. In fact, more than half of PPS comprehensive high schools posted graduation rates above 90%, including Jefferson at 91%, Benson at 93%. Did you hear that, Director Hollins? Okay. Benson in particular graduated 91% of Black students and 90% of Latino students from the class of 2021. So, congratulations to the Benson Texters and Principal Curtis Wilson there. As I posted this remark last week, I'm so proud of our students for their resilience and tenacity during a time when the pandemic has brought about significant disruptions to public education and their learning experience. And as I shared with the broader community, we attribute the positive growth in our students earning a high school diploma at PPS to the dedicated efforts of our educators, staff, and community partners working together towards our students' success. With this incremental improvement to our overall graduation rates, even during a pandemic, I can say as a Superintendent that I'm pleased, but I'm not satisfied until every one of our students is equitably supported to stay on track, walks across the stage on time, and has a strong post-secondary plan. So, we have much more work ahead of us, Directors. And here at PPS, our focus has been to build a curriculum and a learning experience that lifts up the histories, the stories, and the voices of our Black community. We know that as educators, we have a responsibility to center, honor, and uplift the Black experience in school curricula and extracurricular activities every day. And we also acknowledge the importance, the relevance, and the origins of Black History Month. As has been a regular occurrence, our teaching and learning team has prepared and will be sharing a set of resources for our schools and educators to use in the coming month. I'm going to ask Dr. Cheryl Proctor, our new Deputy Superintendent of Instruction in School Communities, to just say a few words and a few remarks about the support that will be provided to schools. Dr. Proctor?
Good evening, Chair de Pass, Directors, and Superintendent Guerrero. As I share with you this evening, in preparation of Black History Month, schools received a list of instructional resources to instruct- to enrich student learning experiences. Black History Month is an annual celebration of achievements of African-Americans and serves as a time to- for recognizing their central role in US history. Also known as African-American History Month, the event grew out of- out of Negro History Week, the brainchild of historian, noted Harvard historian, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, and other prominent African-Americans. The resources provided to schools were intended to help leaders, to support educators in planning to think about- in planning to think about centering student voice and to focus on celebrating Black history, culture, achievements, experiences, and the ongoing struggle for liberation and justice. And while the resources were not intended to be fully exhaustive and definitive, they are designed to be a starting point for conversation. And as we continue to move towards a culturally responsive instructional practice throughout our system, all day, every day, 365 days of the year, I know that we are also working very closely with our staff, specifically, you know, using resources like a culturally responsive teaching in the brain by Dr. Azaretta Hammond, and other resources to support educators in rethinking pedagogy and practices so that we can continue to lend the Black voice to the learning experiences in the classrooms every day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Proctor. Directors, in addition to the curricular resources that we're providing our educators for Black History Month, we also want to thank you for unanimously approving January 31st as a Professional Development and Educator Planning Day at your last Board meeting. And while our educators are investing this much-needed day to plan, collaborate, and learn together, especially focus on how best to support our students at this particular time, I want to share with you that some of our racial equity social justice partners, SUN providers, and childcare providers will also be making available services for students and families. In fact, 10 of our racial equity partners, 16 SUN schools, and nine special programs will provide an array of services across 23 schools and through eight off-site events. So, we expect our partners to have this menu of activities, including visits to see the Amsi Mandela exhibit, the Lloyd Center skating rink, and participating in other activities at the SEI Center, student group gatherings at Roseway Heights, tutoring and homework clubs, and many other enriching activities will be available to students. We recognize that any changes to our school calendar impacts each of our families in unique ways. We hope that these limited supports will help address some possible needs across our school communities on this particular day. So, I want to say thank you to all of our community partners once again for stepping up and for continued, your continued collaboration. More new talent, Directors. As is the regular tradition here at PPS, I'm so pleased to announce the appointment of Freddie Mack as our next Senior Director of Communications. Freddie, who will be starting next week, recently served. Just to give you a little bit of a sense of his unique background. As Deputy Special Assistant for Public Affairs to the Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff in Washington, DC. In this previous role, he served as Second-in-Charge for planning and executing all public affairs activities within the Joint Chiefs of Staff Office. A longtime public servant, Freddie has served also in the US Department of Agriculture and enjoyed a successful 20-year military career, including serving as an official Army spokesperson. So, we're related about Freddie joining Team PPS to help design, develop, and implement our next district's communication strategy. We believe his empathetic leadership, strong public relations background, and people-focused communications experience will make a great addition to the team, and we can't wait for him to begin. So, I don't want you to just see his picture because we have him here live, I believe. So, Freddie, I think, is available to join us by Zoom to share a few words personally and thoughts about taking on this new role here at PPS. Lieutenant Colonel?
Thank you for that kind introduction, Mr. Superintendent. I am deeply honored and very excited to work with you, the faculty, the staff, and the Board of Trustees of PPS to educate and equip and encourage our next generation of leaders. And more specifically, I look forward to communicating and building relationships with all stakeholders through every medium available to support the district and the- with all stakeholders through every medium available to support the district and the visions, the mission and vision of the district. So again, it's my honor to join your team, and I look forward to arriving and getting after it. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome, Mr. Mack. I don't know what you'd like us to call you. Is it Lieutenant Colonel or is it Mr.?
Freddie works fine.
Thank you and welcome.
I look forward to meeting you in person. Welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Freddie. We have a long to-do list for you. Well, directors, you know that PPS community is beautiful for all its diversity. Next Tuesday here at PPS and across the world, we'll be celebrating and welcoming the Vietnamese Lunar New Year. On February 1st, our Vietnamese community marks the beginning of the Year of the Tiger and will host celebrations across a number of schools. I want to take this opportunity to express my good wishes to everyone who celebrates and hope this new year is full of peace, health, and happiness. I'm looking forward to being present at Rose City Park tomorrow morning to get a sneak preview of the performances that our students are working hard to prepare. So to our community out there, Chak Mung Lom Boy, Happy New Year.
Impressive. I was actually just sounding that out myself.
And then on a more serious note, on a more serious note, as many of you know, on Saturday, January 15th, I think many of us witnessed the 11-hour standoff at a synagogue in Texas in which the rabbi and three congregants were taken hostage. Unfortunately, this act of terror is part of the growing climate of antisemitism across the globe and one that is also directly impacting our students, their families, and our staff, especially those who identify as culturally or religiously Jewish. I've heard directly from members of our community how vulnerable and emotionally difficult this rise of antisemitism is having on parts of our community. So I want to take this opportunity to affirm that here at Portland Public Schools, and as your superintendent, I stand strong with our community and denounce this growing antisemitic violence. I continue to be disheartened by the need to make these kinds of statements on occasion as it indicates a failure of our society to see one another for our humanity. So we hold our Jewish community and families impacted by this growing threat and stand strong with one another to eradicate all forms of hate in our community. Our district and our lives are enriched and strengthened by the presence and contributions of the Jewish community. And as educators, we will continue to be there for our students and remind them of the active role we have in creating a future that respects and brings value to each other. And finally, directors, in closing, I want to take a moment to give a special thanks to Brian Robertson, who's retiring at the end of this month. Brian has helped to capture the joy, the learning, and excitement of our school communities for over 10 years. We've often enjoyed his short video clips here in these meetings, bringing to life the work and highlights of our students and school communities, and we appreciate his role in making our board meetings virtually accessible to our communities. And I know he's not here with us this evening, but I want to wish him all the happiness and joy as he now commences his retirement. So thank you, Brian. And that ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you, Brian, for your many years of service. We'll now move, I see Student Representative Weinberg. Not to put you on the spot, but are you ready to jump right into the work of the district and share your student report?
Of course. So I actually don't have much to report, just with preparing for finals and everything, but I think recognition of the closing of the semester coming up on Friday, just putting it out, a thanks to all the teachers, district office staff, principals, support staff, paraeducators that have all made the first half of this school year able to be in person for all students. And also just congratulations to students who have made it through this first half of the year. Yay, yeah. Yeah, sorry.
Back to business. We're now going to go through the board committee reports, and I think if we just go down the line with Director Hollins, do you have a report?
Yes, thank you, Chair DePass. So we had the Facilities and Operations meeting last Thursday, Wednesday, one of those days. We got a report from the Bond Accountability Committee. We also got a report from the Office of School Modernization. We got an update on the ADA Transition Plan, and that should be coming to the board at some point. And we made the decision as far as on the committee level, as far as the Whittaker-Adams site and the city's proposal for the Safe West Village. And that was it.
Excellent, thank you. Director Brim Edwards?
Thank you, Chair.
I know we'll hear from you later in the meeting, but I don't know if you had a brief update.
Thank you, Chair DePass. So there's a number of items later on the agenda about some of the work you've been doing, but I think I just want to highlight that we had a committee meeting on Friday, and then we have another one tomorrow at 4:00. And I just want to like recognize the topic of last Friday's committee meeting and the topic of tomorrow's meeting is the Climate Response, Climate Justice, and Sustainable Practices policy, which has been in committee, I think, almost a year. And about four weeks ago, the parties involved were quite far apart, and I really want to acknowledge the, they're quite far apart on paper, but in spirit, I think there was a common purpose and a common agenda. And just in the last four weeks, I want to thank staff, a lot of staff, who worked hard to find the language that brought us together on paper of what I think in our hearts and our minds, we had common ground. And I also thank the climate advocates who brought that same spirit to the work because we're very close, and hopefully tomorrow we will be bringing out a committee and bringing it to the full board for a first reading. So I know that all the committee members who have been working on it, you know, were excited to bring it forward because it's big and it's bold, and it was messy.
Thank you. And before we move down the line, I just wanted to thank Director Hollins for considering that proposal that the city, because we did the right thing by considering it and being really clear and, you know, working through the process of just considering it. You know, it's a moral, it's a moral and community problem, and I wish the city well in their search for spaces. Director Lowry, do you want to go next?
Yes. So we had a really great intergovernmental committee. Gary and I had lots of fun, and we got to hear from our staff about the timeline for Tubman. And if we want to open it in fall of '27, we need to have a site selected by May. So the staff had some really great slides with like big red lettering to help us see like where the draft deadline was, but they have a wonderful and robust plan to really do their due diligence on options and to incorporate community voice, as you heard from Mr. Brown from the King PTA. And so it was very thoughtful, I thought, conversation that explored, you know, the best option isn't there, but to continue to talk about what can happen with the site that will be the best for our students. I did, the young lady who spoke tonight caused me to think about how we can continue to be in conversation with ODOT about this project as it, you know, relates. I think, you know, we know that there's pollution at Tubman, and so moving Tubman, I think in the long run is the better option, but to think about as we look at our environmental policy and some other conversations as we continue. I know some of us, we, the prior board did sign a letter to ODOT about this expansion and has done some work. So we will be raising that at the next meeting, which is on the 16th of February, and continuing to do our work around how we relate to other bodies of government in our community.
Thank you.
Can I just say something in response to the intergovernmental committee? So we actually did get some collaboration from the King PTA. They actually sent a slide deck for potential options. So the collaborations that we was talking about, it looks like it's paying off thus far.
Excellent. Thank you for the addition. Director Green?
Yes, the Alternative School and Charter School Committee. We've been doing some good work, working behind the scenes, just trying to shore up all of our, all of our schools. And I really want to take my hat off, just use this moment really just to appreciate our staff. I mean, we don't say it enough. We don't tell them thank you enough. There, we ask a lot, and they've already got a lot going on, and then a new guy comes in and asks a lot again. Sometimes he asks it the wrong way, but he's still just steady asking, and they're the nicest people. And I just, I need to, I just want to take this moment, my time, to really, the committee is going to go on and it's going to keep working, there's more work to do, but I really just want to take this moment to publicly really thank the staff. Because without the staff doing all the hard work on the back end, the stuff that nobody sees, you don't, you don't realize just how much is being done. Nobody thinks about the people that are setting up the stage for the concert. They just see the concert. But it took the, it took the people in the back setting everything up, setting up the lights, setting up the smoke, making sure that the mics were working, making sure that all those pieces were there in order for that concert to be what it was. And without those people doing what they did, then the concert would have just, what would it have been? And so I just really want to say to the staff, say to the soup, say to our teams, we know that you guys are working hard, we know that you've got a lot on your plate, you've got a lot on your shoulders, and there's a lot more heavy lifting to do, and we appreciate you for doing what you do. And so I just want to say thank you.
Who carries the amps?
That was an example. But you're a great roadie.
We appreciate it, Director Green.
Thank you, David. Thank you for modeling one of the characteristics we want to see in our graduates, and that's collaborative, collaboration. Director Konstam, did you have a, did you have a report?
We are on the agenda with our audit.
Later in the agenda? Yeah, okay. We'll wait. Thank you. Okay. I think we've got everybody. We're going to now get a report on our graduation rates. And Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce that next, this next item?
Thank you, Director Pass. I think you heard me give a little bit of a teaser on a topic we wanted to spend a little time on this evening, and we know that the state of Oregon just released official graduation outcome. So thankfully, we have Dr. Renard Adams, our Chief of Research Assessment and Accountability, who's prepared a nice presentation for you to try to understand what the highlights are, what some of the trends are, where our work remains. We're very clear about that. We also have some featured guests this evening. We'll have them introduce themselves as they come up as well, so.
It's for you, Principal Allen. The more the merrier.
So glad to have our esteemed principal of Jefferson High School here with us this evening. Congratulations on your outcomes as well. Dr. Adams, take it away. Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, Board Directors, Student Representative Weinberg. We are pleased to have time with you tonight to talk about our recently released graduation data. I am, joining me tonight are Dr. Cheryl Proctor, our Deputy Superintendent for Instruction in School Communities, Margaret Calvert, our Regional Superintendent for Secondary Schools in Multiple Pathways to Graduation, and Principal Allen from Jefferson High School, who just reached a 90% graduation rate, so we're really excited about having him here to talk about that. In addition, I also believe Dr. Hymel is virtual with us tonight in case there are some particular questions. If I could have the next slide, please? Thank you. Our guiding questions for tonight are on the screen before you. These will serve as our guardrails for our conversation. The team here will be happy to take questions at the end of the presentation, but one of the, but the questions we wanted to answer tonight are, what is our graduation rate for the class of 2021, and how does it compare to the statewide graduation rate? What are our trends in graduation rate by race over time? What are our high school graduation rates? And then we wanted to share with you what central supports have been put in place to support graduation success at high schools. And then we wanted to have Principal Allen talk about what schools are doing to reach that 90% threshold, because we know that's sort of a critical marker of success in terms of graduation rate. So let's dive right in. For the class of 2021, PPS students achieved a graduation rate of 84.4%, which is an increase compared to the prior year in class. Portland Public Schools has seen a steady increase in on-time graduation rate of its students from 2009, 2010, which was the first year of the cohort graduation model, all the way to the present. The graduation rate has increased by nearly five percentage points in the past three years, by over 10 percentage points since 2014, '15, and by nearly 26 percentage points since the implementation of the cohort model. This is significant and steady progress in the aggregate. We will disaggregate these data and look at where our work still remains in just a few During the same time as the overall graduation rate has improved, and specifically over the last five years, PPS students, shown by the blue line, have outpaced their peers across the state of Oregon in graduation rate, with Oregon students, all Oregon students being shown by the gray line. For the class of 2017, PPS's graduation rate was 1.2 percentage points higher than that of the state. Today, for the class of 2021, that difference has increased to 3.8 percentage points. While we celebrate our overall success in the aggregate, disaggregated graduation data reveals where we still have work to do. All student groups achieved graduation rates greater than 75% with the exception of Native students and Pacific Islander students, who earn graduation rates of 50% and 73% respectively. It should be noted that these two cohorts of students are much smaller than the other student groups, so we sometimes see wild fluctuations in the changes of graduation rate year over year, because when you have a smaller cohort, it takes fewer students to cross or not cross to really change what that rate looks like. While the overall graduation rate in PPS has increased, persistent gaps between student groups remain and require focused attention. While three in four African-American and Latinx students graduated on time within four years, currently, there's a 13 percentage point gap between African-American students and white students, and a 13.5 percentage point gap in graduation between Latinx students and white students. Moreover, the largest gap is currently between our Native students and white students, and that gap stands at 38.5 percentage points. This slide shows one-year comparisons between graduation rates between the class of 2021 and 2020. One-year comparisons reveal increases in our graduation rates for Asian, multiracial other ancestries and white students, and decreases in graduation rates for African-American and Latinx students. And again, the large changes in graduation rates for Native students and Pacific Islanders should be carefully and cautiously considered due to the small size of the cohort. There are 26 students in the Native cohort and 30 students in the Pacific Islander cohort compared to the much larger cohorts for the other groups of students. Now let's look at the 10-year change in graduation rates by race and ethnicity. All student racial groups demonstrated increases in the graduation rate from 2009, 2010 to present. For some groups, the rise in graduation rate outpaced the increases in the rate for PPS as a whole. Multiracial other ancestry showed the largest gains to date, followed by Latinx students, white students, and African-American students. On the next slide, we will look at line graphs as a way to understand gap closure. But what we know about gap closure is that for our students of color to catch up and close gaps, their change in graduation rate needs to be the highest over time and needs to be greater than that of our white students and our Asian students in order for those gaps to close. This line graph shows graduation rates by race and ethnicity from 2009, 2010 until the current year. Again, here we see those large fluctuations for Native and Pacific Islander students, so please continue to interpret those rates with caution. so please continue to interpret those rates with caution. Some gap closure is evident in these data, and that progress must be continued and accelerated for Black, Latinx, Native, and other Brown students for full gap closure to be realized. Now, let's take a look at our student membership groups. For the class of 2021, students experiencing poverty achieved a graduation rate of 78%, while six in 10 students who were either students with disabilities or English learners graduated within four years on time. Lastly, our talented and gifted students continue to show strong graduation achievement with a graduation rate of 96%. One other very interesting data point that we're currently digging into a little bit deeper is our CTE completer graduation rate. Our initial data show that students who completed at least two credits in a CTE program of study have a graduation rate of 95%. So we're looking into that a little bit further. This slide shows high school graduation rates by each campus. Of note, as the Superintendent noted earlier, over half of all of our comprehensive high schools achieve graduation rates greater than 90%. What is also notable is the column to the far right with the text highlighted in green, which shows the 10-year change in graduation rates. All of our campuses and alternative programs have shown growth over the last 10 years in their graduation rate, which is remarkable. Next, Dr. Proctor will talk about the why behind these data in terms of the central office supports that have been implemented to support schools and their graduation efforts.
Thank you. So coordinated efforts across the system have been in place to support students in credit completion and have contributed to much of these results. This includes supports for credit completion at school sites funded through Measure 98, Portland Evening and Summer Scholars and Virtual Scholars. In addition, 189 students graduated from our CBOs as part of the class of 2021 or as fifth-year graduates as well. Over the last four years, the high school system, supported by the central office staff, focused on six targeted strategies through the High School Success Plan. The first was implementation of culturally sustaining pedagogy and curriculum. Second is fostering healthy and equitable school climate and culture. Third is preparing all students for post-secondary success. And fourth is enhancing CTE quality and integrating CTE with core academics. The fifth is systematically implementing interdisciplinary grade-level teams. And finally, improving overall systems alignment and responsiveness. We used intentional investments from the Measure 98 grant to support these strategies. Some of the specific actions and supports that we provided to the high school students included funding, coaching, and direction in creating ninth-grade success teams, organizing and funding multiple credit recovery opportunities for students, planning and executing expanded leap into ninth-grade summer programs, which is the summer bridge, and opening new CTE programs across the district. So some of these efforts, really as you see that is listed here, really contributed to the overall numbers that you see here as well. And finally, you know, we want to talk about how we focus on targeting the chronically absent students and providing individualized post-secondary planning on focal students, and expanding the advanced course opportunities like dual-credit and AP coursework throughout the district. And now, we will hear from Principal Allen of Jefferson High School, whose students achieved a graduation rate of over 90% for the first time. Principal Allen is completing his 14th year as an administrator at Jefferson.
Thank you, Dr. Proctor.
I think I was there when he first started.
When I was at Whittaker, I was one of the kids in SEI, and he was one of the counselors there.
Absolutely.
Nice young man, nice young man.
I'm sure you have some stories.
Good evening, Chairperson, the pass, directors, Superintendent Guerrero. It's my pleasure to speak to you this evening. Just share a few notes that I jotted down. So our growth at Jefferson is due to many factors, including our focal student work, our robust partnerships with SEI Latino Network, our in-house credit recovery work, like after-school tutorial, Saturday School, and high expectations for all students, such as our middle college model and biotech health science program, as well as our strong and dedicated teachers and support staff. Additionally, we extend all of our high expectations to other areas that engage our students athletically, the arts, extracurricular activities, and this also supported by consistency in our school leadership and faculty. Ms. Calvert and I have been at Jefferson High School since my 14th. Ms. Calvert was with me for 13 years. And so, yes, that's been the grind that we've been doing, so that's part of it. Next slide. At Jefferson, of course, like Superintendent Guerrero was talking, we're always pushing for 100% in achievement for all students, and we won't give up until we meet that goal. 100% has kind of been the language that we've been talking about. Next slide.
I want to linger here, so we can see that steady progress for those different student groups of students over time. This is a function of principals and teachers and counselors knowing students by name and need. And when you do that, and you focus in, and you provide those differential supports, you reach and see the types of graduation success that Principal Allen is here to share with us.
And you know, when I was a teacher a long time ago, back at Jefferson High School, '84 through '88.
When you were a child.
Yes. When I talked to the staff today just about just celebrating our rates, you know, I can't ever remember 90% being achieved at Jefferson High School, ever, since I've been in Portland for 42 years. So we're very excited about that. But if you see 93% of our Black students, and you know, obviously, all means all, but that's huge for us, too. We're really excited about that, so, man, that's good news. And then, just lastly, you know, we believe that all of our students can achieve. And in our middle college model, and this slide shows that this belief is 100% of our students earning a Jefferson Middle College diploma with 12 or more PCC credits is close to being realized. So that's just 12, but actually, last year, two of our students earned a middle college diploma, high school diploma, and an associate's degree on top of, you know, getting... So that's good work we've been doing. And just 2020, as far as college credits, which, you know, again, we've been in this pandemic for all of this time. And so, we had 3,500 students, 3,500 credits that were earned by 2020 class, and 5,000 college credits earned by 2021 class. So those kids were just... I mean, they were going for it. So you know, it's all of that work that we've been doing over the years that's made a difference. So I'd be glad to entertain any questions you guys might have. But I'll turn it back over to Dr. Proctor and Dr. Adams.
This is actually the conclusion of our presentation, so it's timely. We'll now take any questions you might have. And I just want to thank you, Principal Allen, with everything that's going on in the school buildings, and how stretched we know staff and students are at the moment for taking time to be with us tonight.
Thank you so much for being here, and that was very encouraging to see, particularly in your building, the fruits of all of this labor over the years. I have one question that's not even that important. Would other board directors have questions of what we've just heard?
I just want to make the comment that I think when we see graduation rates go up, the sort of backlash to that as well, you know, they're just passing kids through. But one of the things I really appreciate that, you know, in your comments tonight, and continuously in what PPS is striving for, is that robust academic experience and those high expectations for our students. And that this is about really preparing our students for what Superintendent said, that successful post-secondary path. And I really see that, that these graduation rates are a celebration of the ability and success of our students to live into that graduate portrait. And so, thank you all for... And Margaret, I know this has been a fun year for you, too, helping to make that happen, and, you know, holding our students to the... All of our students, knowing that they can be successful, knowing that they can perform at high academic rigor, and really helping them push the envelope of what maybe they even thought was possible for themselves.
I had a couple of comments. One is, Dr. Adams, you referred to the team at Jefferson knowing all of their students by name and by need. I think that we know that this is the key to raising achievement and eliminating our gaps through every level. But I think it's interesting to note that this kind of differentiated attention and personal attention and deep curiosity and understanding of students' individual learning needs was even more important in the pandemic and in the pivot to remote learning. Because maybe you can get away with one-size-fits-all a little easier when everyone's in the same room together. But it just didn't work at all in remote learning. And yet, our students were still able to be successful, I think, because of those relationships. So I just wanted to call that out. And then, the other thing I wanted to call out is, these were our four-year graduation rates, but we also have some pretty stunning statistics for our five-year graduation rates. And Superintendent, in your remarks, I got my hackles up a little bit, because you said we won't be satisfied until we see every student graduate in four years, which, yes, I believe is a laudable goal. But I'm also so proud of our students who graduate in five years, and those are impressive statistics this year, because many of those students come back from being completely disconnected for education. And as Director Green was talking about before, many of these are students in our alternative settings. And they came back, and they got connected. And a lot of times, they got connected through CTE or other things that really spoke to them in a relevant way about what they wanted for their lives. So I want to celebrate those kids, too. And just thank you, Principal Allen, for joining us. And I've loved in the past years celebrating success at Jefferson High School as this trajectory has risen and risen and risen. So I feel very proud to be associated with this work.
I guess my question is, you know, considering the success at Jefferson and knowing all the different inputs, the middle college program, knowing every student by name and need, having a higher number of African-American teachers, what is it that we can replicate in other buildings because of the success? It's accessing, it's working at Jefferson, could it work in other places? I'm wondering about, you know, our other school communities. You know, each one is different and has its unique characteristics. But what is it from Jefferson, which I love so much? And it's my neighborhood high school, and a lot of family history there. What can we take from that excellence and transfer to other buildings so we can see that success? That's a question for everybody here.
It's a great question, because there's a good practice here to learn from. There's a proof point, and I'm sure Principal Allen and team will talk about, they're not operating in a vacuum, our high school team. There is a High School Success Plan. There's elements in there that you would find as features across all of our campuses. But I'll let you elaborate, Ricky.
Well, yeah, I would just add, Chairperson, the pass, that I think one of the things that's been most important is just have consistency. So Ms. Calvert and I, we first came together at Jefferson High School. We kind of made a pact to each other. And we just said, okay, whoever goes for the principal job, we're going to stick together, because we kind of knew where Jefferson was, and we was like, oh, we're going to stick together and get the ship on the right track and make sure. So consistency in leadership. And then, with her and I, we were able to hire staff members who had the same philosophy that we had, who wanted to be there, who loved working with kids. And so, I think that's definitely part of it, relationships, good partnerships with our partners, with like SEI and Latino Network, that's important. But that's pretty much the core.
Yeah, it looks like the hiring piece is really interesting, because you can hire for emotional intelligence or just hard skill. And I think that your success, your track record over the years has proven that you've been very intentional about who you've brought into the building and using the theory of action that you've just spelled out to us. And, yeah, I would love to see the things that are working, those elements of this success that are working, employed in other places, differentiated to the school communities that are served in those other places.
Good evening. I just have one small bit to add to this conversation as well. And I think there's a lot about collective action and efficacy. And so, I think one of the pieces that we've been able to see grow and be sustained at Jefferson is an understanding that every person that is in the building is responsible for the students that are there. So Ricky, excuse me, Principal Allen, mentioned focal student work. And this is very central to how we approach working with students. So everyone in the building identifies students that we know have great potential and then feel very responsible for their success. So that happens for every staff member. So this is part of the work that we do. We identify students that we know are, you know, in danger of finding real dramatic success. And then, how are we going to support them to do that? So I think there is some real intentionality over the years in doing that, and it's become embedded in the culture of the school and the staff. It is something that we do regularly, so.
Right, now, I'll just add to that, Ms. Calvert. We intentionally pick kids of color. We want our secretaries, our custodians, our cafeteria workers. They have focal students that they know that they want to work with, who they got relationships with. And we track, and we ask them to learn above-the-line information about those students and below-the-line information about those students. So those are some of the strategies that we use, and we've been doing that since we initially started that courageous conversation work and with those focal students.
That's fantastic. I just remember, I went to MLC and graduated from there. And when the lunch lady from the 70s got ill, it was a multi-age. We kept her, we supported her for the last two years financially and every other way. You know, get that relationship, and it's really meaningful for kids, especially for those that don't get recognized by maybe a professor or a teacher.
So a school community director, Chair to pass, with high expectations, critical first piece. And you heard some of the more systemic pieces around our High School Success Plan, some of the ways we've made strategic investments. Dr. Proctor listed some of those out. But we also have Dr. Hymel here with us this evening. I was wondering if you wanted to add in how some of the specific targeted support to our high school campuses have also been part of the ingredients.
Hi, thanks so much, Superintendent. And again, congratulations, Principal Allen, and happy to be here, Chair to pass and board members. I would just add that I think our schools have been really intentional about making engaging programs for students, so increasing the different variety of advanced coursework. So at Jefferson, that shows up as the middle college. And I think across our system, we have added really exciting advanced courses for students to take that keep them engaged in school, as well as a really robust CTE programming that shows students the application of the knowledge. And so, I would just add some really exciting programming additions would also be that piece.
Do we have a journalism CTE there? Because at one time, that television station was like the biggest one on the West Coast. I think maybe there's a television station, but is that a CTE option?
Currently, not anymore, but we are hoping to bring that back. We're hoping to bring that back. But we currently lost that teacher to retirement, and so we're looking to try to pull that back together. But we, we currently lost that teacher to retirement and, um, so we're looking to try to pull that back together.
Chair, I have a question. First of all, I want to congratulate, uh, Mr. Allen. I know it's been a long road over at Jeff, um, you know, growing up here and, and hearing all the, the doubts and all the naysayers about Jeff and the community that surrounds Jeff. So, uh, I'm gonna definitely congratulate you on, on the success. It is well overdue and, and I appreciate you for, for being there and leading that charge.
Thank you, Director.
But I do have a question. It's not for Mr. Allen. So when I talked to, uh, Dr. Adams about this a little earlier, I want to know like what's the relationship between proficiency and our graduation rate? Cause you know, I know the last couple of months, we've heard a lot of information about our proficiency ratings, especially with our black and brown kids. So I just want to know, what is that relationship with that? And does that mean that each kid who graduates is proficient in those, um, standards, our, our graduation standard?
So, uh, in terms of, um, looking at the graduation requirements for, um, the state of Oregon and looking at the three-tier approach that is typically, uh, taken, which looks at course completion, credit completion. There is, um, a level of proficiency, if you will, but a level of, of requirements that are applied to each course that a student has to, um, successfully attain in order to earn the credit and through the accumulation of a number of credits. That is one tier of how they're able to, um, measure towards, uh, graduation. Also, um, in the state, we looked at, um, uh, essential skills. But for the past, uh, two years since, uh, the pandemic, the essential skills component, um, had been waived. Uh, the essential skills is one that could be achieved through the, um, smarter balance, the, the assessment, the SBAK. And, um, also through other, um, measures as well. There are localized assessments by which some students will be able to demonstrate some essential skills. But when it comes to the measure, um, that talks specifically about demonstrated profession proficiency, for example, in ELA and math, um, you know, with the waivers that happened over the past couple of years, that had not been necessarily a part of the graduation requirements. Now, when we talk about relationship, uh, thinking about the current cohort of graduates that we're looking at this data for, um, this cohort of students, um, prior to the pandemic had, um, you know, over 10 years of schooling and grounded experiences, um, in, uh, learning and, and building skill. And it, it's very different than when we look at, for example, our recent map data that was presented to you. And if we look at the eighth grade students, for example, that is represented in that map data. Although students had, uh, before the pandemic, like, you know, deeper, you know, we may have seen some learning loss, but you know, they had a, a shorter runway, if you will, uh, to, uh, strengthen skill development with six years. Because by the time the pandemic, uh, it went into effect, they were probably in sixth grade. Whereas we're looking at this particular graduation cohort who probably, who more than likely had a runway of 10, uh, you know, being in 10th grade by the time, we started to see, uh, some of those effects there. But, um, you know, really looking at, um, how we are really looking at data sets and making comparisons, it really is by cohort by cohort. And then there are different factors, um, that kind of weigh in to how, um, you know, uh, the graduation is calculated, especially, uh, with some of the waivers and things that occurred during the time of the pandemic. But in terms of proficiency, part of the proficiency that is required for graduation is a course proficiency, uh, and credit attainment with a particular rigor of, uh, expectation for each course that is required for graduation.
So when you say credit attainment, are you talking about just like the report card grades or are you talking about some other?
Yeah, of course. Yeah, there's, there are a number of courses and credits, uh, that have to be accumulated to, um, to, uh, meet satisfactory.
A student could graduate with straight Ds, correct? Like if they got a D in every single subject, they could still graduate?
You know, I'm gonna pass that question to.
So I think that that's an important part, Director Hollins, as we talk about that, that I think the needle we're trying to move is,
Right.
to increase that.
So someone can graduate and still not be proficient?
That is, that is by the grades, um, yes, but then there's also, it, it depends on what you're describing. So there's also, again, the essential skills part. And, and, uh, part of what was in the calculation for the graduation requirement, from what I understand in the state of Oregon, was the essential skills. And that had, that in itself had been waived. Now, when it comes to, um, you know, the, the rigor and what is required to actually pass a class, um, you know, yes, uh, there are students who are able to pass, um, a class with a D. But, but it's still, if they are able to meet the combined, uh, requirements prescribed by the state, then they are able to earn a high school diploma.
May I add one of the pieces?
Yeah, please.
So I think, um, one of the other pieces that, uh, uh, I think is, it was part of the board goals too, is around, uh, measures of college readiness, right? And so when we look at that, that is around, um, and I have to, I'm doing this, I'm looking at Dr. Hamel, who knows this off of the dome. But I think that it's, you know, a question of, uh, CTE course completion, advanced coursework completion. So these indicators are the pieces that you're getting at is like, not only are you meeting the graduation requirements, but how are you demonstrating your knowledge in, 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 in these advanced courses? So some of the pieces that we are seeing, um, some of the successes that we're seeing across the system are, uh, places where it's like, uh, IB for all. So like there's a sophomore human geography class that is offered, um, either for, uh, it's actually an AP class, excuse me. That's not a, um, an IB class. But, so there are these that then provide some of the external, um, validators and of, of, um, rigor as well. And so what you see, I think this is the part that, um, I'm gonna go back to what Mr. Allen shared, is that one of the things to, to recognize is that, um, not only did students meet graduation requirements at Jefferson in particular, but they also earned 5,200 or five, over 5,000 college credits. So this is a way of also demonstrating proficiency, right? Of like not only meeting the standards that we see, um, laid out in our courses, but also that they're, they're, they're showing and demonstrating understanding in advan-, uh, excuse me, advanced coursework as well.
And this is why our board goal is not high school graduation, right? This is why we set our board goal as having, you know, that, that next readiness. And we also recognize that for some students, like all students are, um, able to achieve greatness. Some students, their greatness is in CTE, their greatness is in bilinguality, their greatness is in art, their greatness is in, um, math. And so we want to have pathways to recognize those skill sets and the greatness of each individual student, which is why the board goal is around that, showing demonstrated proficiency in a pathway that gets them ready for post-secondary life. But graduation rates are wonderful and, you know, I think your question about proficiency, those numbers we saw of like less than 5% of our black boys, um, are on track for math in fifth grade, which, you know, that being on track for math in fifth grade is a huge indicator of your success in, um, more advanced math. And so, you know, we cannot expect if that's the case in, you know, fifth grade, how are we getting them, you know, to the high school diploma? Well, there's some, some pieces to that, that we, I think, you know, we are seeing growth, we are seeing increased rigor, we're seeing, um, really good news. And we have to still keep our eye on the prize, which is making sure our students are growing, making sure they're, um, attaining the things that we know they can attain and having high expectations for their academic success.
I'm glad you brought that up because, so when I look back at the Oregon Department of Education assessment piece, and I'm assuming this is 2017, 18 class that's now graduated in 2021. You know, when I look at, not only looked at the math, but I looked at the language and the science scores as well. And when I look at, uh, black boys in, you know, eighth grade, which will be, that next year, they would have went to high school at 12.3. But then in language and science, it would piece those same low, uh, those same low, um, proficiency rates. And what Dr. Adams was talking about back in, you know, uh, December, where he was, as he was explaining the, the different numbers, how they'd get at, say, eighth grade, but they'd be reading that fifth grade level, right? I just, I'm just trying to see how did that gap, or how did that, what closes at that point from them in the eighth grade, being able to read that fifth grade level? And then by the time they get to 12th grade, they're proficient enough to graduate. I just, I just don't understand that connection.
So is proficiency, I think that's one of the questions about like, what is proficiency? And is it 12th grade level or what is the standard for being proficient? I mean, 62% of Americans read, um, oh no, that's the wrong number. But the vast majority of Americans read at a fifth grade reading level or below. Like that's, that's kind of the level of American sort of, uh, ability at this point. So what, what does proficiency look like in math and reading for the high school student?
Well, I think in research, we would always say proficiency as measured by. And so then it depends how you want to measure it. And so one of the ways we measure proficiency, K8, is through either SBAK or our map assessments when, when we do those. Graduation is a culmination of students demonstrating their proficiency via coursework with their teachers who do, in my opinion, a yeoman's job, differentiating instruction and meeting students where they are. Um, and of course, there are, we know there are students that did not graduate on time. And we can certainly, my team and I can certainly look into those students and see what their actual last proficiency score was to sort of understand that. But, um, it would really depend on how we're measuring it. It's like your heart rate versus your pulse versus your blood pressure. All those things are important. They're all three, um, slightly different measures of, um, what's going on with your heart. And I would ask that we think about graduation as a different marker of success than we think about, uh, an achievement test score. There's someone can be, there are some instances where I've had students who were just terrible test takers. You know, no matter what they showed me in class, on the unit test, they just bombed all the time. And I had students that could, um, sometimes not be the most attentive, engaged students and do well on the exams. And so you have to wonder what's going on with that. But I think it's all about knowing each student by name and need and providing each year they, what they really need. That enables high schools to do that work of closing some of those gaps that enables students to then be successful in their coursework and graduate on time.
And may I, um, did you, did you get your question answered? Cause I was cur-, I mean, I think, okay.
Yeah. And as I, as we look at the graduation rates and we, and we celebrate, um, what we're seeing in those rates today, uh, just like Superintendent Guerrero says, uh, there's still work to be done. And it's full, uh, full acknowledgement that A, we need to get to 100%. And, um, B, we need to also, uh, better define, uh, exactly what, um, our grade level expectation is of, for high school curriculum and for the instruction that we're providing to students even at the high school level. So, so the instructional framework that we are in the process of developing is something that's going to be, uh, addressed for grades, uh, K through 12. And then you will see a better definition of how we can better, um, define exactly what that grade level expectation is at the high school level in terms of rigor of instruction and how we could best meet it. So to give you an example, one of the trainings that I've done over the years is, um, you know, especially from my high schools, I used to supervise, uh, like Margaret, a cohort of, of high schools. And I used to say to the principals, what is a A, what is a B, and what is a C? And if we looked at the state assessment and a student, and I looked at proficient, what I would break down in the data is we would look at the proficiency rate of students in, uh, English, 10th grade English, for example. And then we would compare it to, um, student, uh, grades in that same 10th, uh, 10th grade, uh, English course. And what we would see is yes, what, what I hear you're getting to the heart of is that there's perhaps a gap in the definition, right? So what is a A? Does A equal proficiency or above? You know, um, does, is C, a C should equal, you know, the, what we see in the, in the measures of proficiency. What that really takes is a standard-aligned, um, curriculum, standards-aligned instruction that really can then bridge the gap, um, in what we're seeing within the data. So for example, if you're looking at previous years', um, SBAK data, and if, if there has not been a practice of aligning what we're teaching to the same skills and standards that are actually assessed by the SBAK, then you're gonna see this mismatch in results. And I think that's what you're seeing, um, Director Hollins. And that is part of the work of the academic office to ensure that we're bridging some of that.
So thank you for that. Um, but another question is, so being, I know this predates you. So before the waiver happened, how do we measure math and reading proficiencies? And how was aligned with the SBAK before the waivers came?
Yeah.
So there's, um, when we looked at the essential skills, there are a number of ways that students are able to demonstrate proficiency on the essential skills. So they, um, it was students who were asked to demonstrate it in reading, uh, writing and mathematics. And that could be done in a number of ways. Some were through nationally normed tests, like the PSAT, the SAT, the ACT, which we offer to, um, our, uh, where in the past, we'd offered to, uh, our sophomores the PSAT and our juniors the ACT. In addition, there is the smarter balance assessment, that's another way to do it. And then there's, uh, local performance assessments that could be done, um, on site that would address the specific skill. So students had a variety of ways that they could demonstrate, um, that proficiency that then would, uh, support them meeting the graduation requirements. I think the other piece too, than when we talk about, um, uh, to your point about is it earning credits or is it, uh, demonstrating understanding? One of the things that, uh, you also need to attend to is, uh, uh, grade point average, right? Which is a cumulative measure of student performance over time, right? So it's another indicator that we can look at. And it's one of the pieces that we, uh, do, it's been some of the work that we've done with our ninth grade success teams and, uh, is looking at that relationship and, um, where are our students, what are the indicators at a freshman year? If your GPA is at such a level, um, it's, it's a combination of credit attainment and, uh, grade point average. So those are a couple of ways that we assess it. But the, in the past and then previous years for, um, demonstration of essential skills, it was a variety of measures and, and, and means that students had to demonstrate it. The benchmark year in Oregon is, uh, the junior year. So that would be, you do it at, prior to graduation, but the benchmark year is in the junior year.
So those kids who graduated in '20 would have done their, those assessments, that benchmark year in 2019?
That's correct.
Okay, so, great. So the graduation rates, we're seeing those kids had that opportunity to do the, those, they had their first opportunity. They didn't ha-, I know we offer students another chance.
Yeah.
So, okay, great.
They have, they have a multiple, in, in any given, um, cohort, there's multiple opportunities starting as early as the sophomore year through the senior year. And, uh, the waiver, uh, the essential skills were waived during the pandemic. So I, and, um, for both the class of 2020 and the class of 2021.
Director Brad Edwards, if you have a comment or question?
I have both. First of all, I want to thank Director Hollins for, uh, raising the question about proficiency. And I think the answers demonstrate, um, that it's more complex than just, um, grades. But it's also really an important question because I think we all want that PPS diploma really to, to mean something. And I, I think, um, just in the context of the pandemic, the early data we saw is that, you know, those students who went from seventh grade right into, that's the time they knew they were in school, they were in high school, is and the impact that, you know, has on their learning and their, their GPA and like just that, that foundational base. And so I think, you know, when we look at the great work that's happening, to think that we've got some, uh, whole cohort, cohort of students who need special care. And what do we need to do to help them, um, through that? Because, um, we want to continue all that good work. But I also really want to thank that continued pressure, like dig deeper and into the numbers, about how we help our students not just graduate, but also be ready for their next steps. I do have some questions about some of the alternative schools, but before I do that, I want to just really acknowledge, um, all the different pieces that were involved in making that happen. So if voters hadn't, um, passed, uh, measure 98 or the Student Success Act wasn't in place, we wouldn't have the, the, the funds to provide a lot of those supports. And then when I look at just what school staff are doing in the building, um, and, you know, I, I'm glad that, um, Principal Allen, you brought up, um, consistency of leadership because, um, when I was on the board before, it was right after Jefferson had been reconstituted. And there had been. And there had been a whole series of principals had rotated through there. And I think those numbers and the results really show what, the great things that happen when you have strong, caring, consistent leadership in a building that both Principal Calvert and Principal Allen have demonstrated over the years. So, you know, I, I, I hope that's a lesson that, as a district, we look at the importance of what that means to a school community, to have that in place over a sustained period of time. And then the last piece is, you know, there was a list on the slide of all the things that helped make that happen. But I think the thing that's really hard to capture, that when I went to meet with a group of seniors at Jefferson in, I think it was the spring of twenty eighteen, to talk to them before their graduation about what made, what made the, you know, just an informal focus group or just meeting about like, you know, as they were, as they were getting ready to leave and they could be super candid, which they were, about like what made the difference for them to graduate and be ready to sort of take their next step. And, you know, all the students spoke about the relationships. So we all know that a, you know, rigorous curriculum is super important and, you know, rich variety of classes. But really what they spoke to is the relationships and the relationships with teachers, with SEI, with their mentors, other community-based partners. I mean, they talked about the principals and like, how often does that happen? I mean, they really, the students really felt cared for by the school community. And that was really what the thing that they identified as the thing that made the difference for them. So I don't want that to really be missed because those relationships are so fundamental. So thank you for the consistent leadership. And I know lots of other high school teams and feeder programs are doing great work as well. And we're lucky to have strong administrative teams at the high schools. I, since a lot of questions have been asked, and I think Director Hollins, you hit some questions I had. I was wondering, I want to ask just about, a little bit different lane, is this was data about our comprehensive high schools. And the question I had about the cohorts is, if you were a freshman, say, at Cleveland, and you ended up moving to one of our alternative programs, are you still in the Cleveland cohort if you started there your freshman year? Or where, but, and you graduated, say you went to Alliance or one of, or Rosemary Anderson High School? How are those accounted for? And I'm just, in some ways curious, like, for, for, I mean, those are all our students. As Director Constan pointed out, that those are a lot of our completers that really show the grit and resilience to get over the finish line. Where do those students show up in either the cohorts or the comprehensives or in the data?
So, two, there are two pieces to it. So what you're describing is, what do we consider as district alternatives that are accountable schools? So that's the language, sort of, of the technical language of the state, right? So Alliance is an alternative school that is within district and that's an accountable school. So if students transferred to Alliance, then that's, Alliance has its own graduation rate. Similar with MLC. So if however, a student.
I'm sorry, just, that's if they started Alliance or if they said go to their junior year?
It's where they finish. So if, if I'm a student that starts at Jefferson and transfers to Alliance, I leave the Jefferson cohort and go into the Alliance cohort.
So, so what does it count as Jefferson? I'm sorry, I'm just.
It doesn't count at Jefferson.
So they're not even part of the cohort then?
They, they leave the cohort and they go to the Alliance cohort.
And that would be true like if you were at Cleveland and you transferred to Ida B. Wells.
Yes.
You would count at the Wells cohort, not at the Cleveland cohort.
That's right, yeah.
And what that points out is the very necessary work that school leaders and teams have to do, monitoring all four cohorts at once. Because kids are constantly entering and leaving different cohorts. And you have to keep track of where they go and where they're coming from in order to, one, maintain consistency in their educational offerings. But two, to make sure you're being held accountable for the kids that you actually graduate.
So for the schools, the other piece that you're asking was like the contracted alternative schools. So schools like POIC or Mount Scott or those schools, what ends up happening is they remain in, so they like would, so if a student leaves, I'm gonna go back to saying you started Jefferson, you go to, to POIC and you finish at POIC, you still count in the Jefferson numbers, right? So that's the difference between what an accountable school, how that, that shows up or how if you move to what are called the contracted alternative schools. So part of what I think Area Senior Director Karina Wolf and her team will be sharing at the next sort of charter an alternative school, is what is that impact overall on, on Portland's graduation rate? So she'll, she'll surface what that looks like and they'll dig into those specific numbers at that time. But as we mentioned, and I think Dr. Proctor mentioned it, what we saw this year from the contracted alternatives for the contribution to four-year graduation rates and five-year graduation rates, there were a hundred and eighty-nine students that could, that finished at those contracted alternative schools that then show up as a benefit in, in our PPS numbers.
So PPS gets the benefit if they graduate? But if, if they, if they don't, where, where do they show up in?
So if I, if I go into my math language, right? So it's a fraction, they'll show up in the denominator as the cohort. And if they graduate, then they end up with the numerator and the denominator. So that will be a help, right? If they end up not graduating from that school, then they still count as the, in the, in, in the denominator. So they will, as they move, they say, and it, once the, excuse me, if they go into one of the contracted alternative schools, they stay in the school's cohort. And they, regardless, and then whatever the outcome is, that still gets reported back to that school's cohort.
Margaret, that was some, I'd like to commend you on that very elegant email. We can just take a moment to appreciate that you are all in fact educators.
And even I could follow it.
And I always appreciate math terminology because it just seems like a language I understand. Like, I was like, oh my gosh, numerator, yes. It makes all the sense in the world now.
So, and this is maybe just like how I view things, but it would be helpful to get it like all together. So we, because, so all of our, our students and some of those are obviously the, some of the most marginalized students, just to fully understand the full picture while celebrating the great successes that we're having. But also like, where do we need to provide more supports? I had also one question about, because the data, when I was looking at it around native students, the numbers I've seen are higher in my understanding that students in the PPS Indian Education Program have much higher graduation rate than the fifty percent that you had up here. And so I'm just curious, and maybe that's in the other data set that we're gonna, going to see?
I would probably have to defer to Ms. Calvert on that.
So I do, I do have a little bit of information about that. So, and I want to thank, again, Area Senior Director Karina Wolf, who is, who has worked tirelessly to support our native students, along with Area Senior Director Lorna Fast Buffalo, of course. What we see is that students that are enrolled in Indian Education, like our PPS Indian Education Program, had a seventy-seven percent four-year graduation rate, up from twenty-seven percent and, and higher than the district-wide. So the students that are participating in the Indian Ed program within the, within our own districts, are, we're seeing dramatically different results for their graduation rates than students that are not. Say it again?
Seventy-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Fifteen points.
It's a twenty-seven, sorry, it's up twenty-seven percent. So it's the overall, the, it's fifty percent for native students across. And in the, the students who participate in the Indian Ed program graduated at seventy-seven percent. So it's a twenty-seven percent increase.
Great question.
I'm sorry, just, and I don't need this right now, but the cohort numbers for the Native Hawaiian Pacific Islanders and the Native American students looked like the, just the cohort numbers were so small to begin with. And that, it seems like twenty-six and thirty, that's, those are the, that's the size of the cohort in our, in our entire district? Or is that?
I'm sorry, ask the question again.
So the, it said the cohort size, and maybe I'm reading the data wrong, but the cohort size of Native American students was twenty-six?
Twenty-six.
And the Pacific Islanders and Native Hawaiian, it's only thirty? So that's, that's the total size of the cohort?
Yes.
Yes.
And remember, they also explained that the size, that N equals, will skew the data. One student could make a difference in the data either way.
Yeah, and I wonder if also there's, like, people, students identifying as multiracial? It just seems way smaller than my understanding of those school communities in, in PPS?
I think, I mean, just general trends, overall, we've seen that students identify more in, multiracially than they have in the past. So I think that is true. And so we're seeing that the multiracial categories are larger than they have been in the past.
Okay, thank you.
As of the twenty-ten census, we started to see there was a category added where you could identify as more than one race.
I just have one question. On table three, are those numbers folded into table two as well?
I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't.
On table three, are those numbers folded into table two? So when we talk about economic disadvantage, especially, are those numbers folded into table two or are those separate numbers?
Say that one more time, I'm sorry, you're looking at the report now, so I needed to get to my copy.
Page three, you have table three, cohort graduation and completion rates. And are those numbers folded into table two? Are those numbers standalone numbers?
Those are folded into our overall rates. Because I can be African-American and talented and gifted. I could be white and economically disadvantaged. So these are just different ways of looking at the students in the different reportable ways we're accountable for reporting the data.
I, I really appreciated this conversation and I think it's been so helpful to really dive in. But I'm looking at our agenda and wondering if some of this can be follow-up conversations that we have through email to clarify some of these data points and if we could maybe move on?
Yes, we do need to move on. We're, we're past our time and we're conscious of, all of us being here, including staff.
But I, I want to recognize that one of the things we talked about at our retreat was talking more about student achievement and, and the work. So like, I really appreciate the, the deep dive versus just a cursory presentation and the opportunity to talk about it in a way deeper way.
Absolutely, so we're, we're doing both. We're both being respectful of everybody in the room, recognizing the conditions we're working under, and taking a deep dive on, we can do both. I'm also, I'm just conscious of time. And if, if you have follow-up, is there, is there one particular place that?
You can email me and I will, if it's not a question, I can readily answer. I'll lean on the team and we'll get answers and responses to you.
So thank you, and thank you for your presentation and your, your patience, everyone in the room. And that was really, the questions were great. I really appreciate Director Hollins and Director Brim Edwards' questions and everyone's comments. We're gonna move now on to.
Thank you, Principal Allen on a school night. Thank you, Chair DePass.
So we're gonna have the first reading of policy revisions. Director Brim Edwards, would you like to introduce the proposed policy revisions?
Yes. So tonight we have two first, we have three first readings. I'm, I'm sorry. No, we have one first reading, no, I'm sorry, two first readings that the Policy Committee considered the other day and are unanimously recommended that the full board have them introduced and put them out for public comment. And the first one is Policy one point eight zero point zero two zero, the nondiscrimination anti-harassment policy. And House Bill twenty-nine thirty-five requires school districts to have policies against discrimination and specifically related to hair and hairstyles. And so if you look at the policy draft, we have added a paragraph to our policy that aligns with this new state law. And the paragraph reads, "Race includes physical characteristics that are historically associated with race, including but not limited to natural hair, hair texture, hair type, and protective hairstyles. A hairstyle, hair color, or manner of wearing hair that includes but is not limited to braids, regardless of whether braids are created with extensions or styled with adornments, locks, and twists." So it's inclusive language.
Does that include jewelry?
So this is statutory language from the legislature?
This is statutory language from the legislature that we will include in our policy.
Excellent.
So that's the first one. Again, that was unanimously recommended for a first reading by the committee. And then second, kind of appropriate for the conversation we just had, there is a board policy relating to graduation requirements. And the, it's Policy four point two zero point zero four two. And again, this is another, two, two pieces of legislation made changes to the grad, to the diploma requirements. The first one was House Bill twenty fifty-six, which removes English from English Language Arts. And it allows a student to meet Language Arts graduation requirements in a language other than English. And then second, it amends world language, the world languages definition. In addition, Senate Bill five one three added a half a credit for civics requirements to the graduation requirement as a part of a social science requirement. I think some of the students that Superintendent Guerrero was referring to earlier tonight, that participate in the Constitution team are well on their way of earning at least that half, half a credit. So what we've done is went into the board policy on the diploma requirements and made adjustments to align with the statute. So both of those policies will now be posted on the board website and the public comment period is a minimum of twenty-one days. Contact information for public comment will be posted with the policy. And if there's not substantial changes to either of those through the public comment period or in the Policy Committee, the board would expect to have a second reading or adoption of the policy at the February twenty-second meeting.
Thank you. We'll next consider the second reading of the, are we there yet? I'm sorry, I blanked out for just a moment. The second reading of the workplace harassment policy. Director Brim Edwards, will you please introduce that policy before I ask for a motion?
Thank you, Chair DePass. This, this was another policy that the Policy Committee recommended to have a first reading on it. There has not been any public comment during the public comment period. Essentially, that, what, the summary of what this change to an existing policy does is the legislature made some revisions to statutes related to employment and required workplace policies to address unlawful conduct constituting discrimination in the workplace and to provide protections against workplace harassment. And also added definitions related to, definitions relating to gender identity. So Madam Chair, I would.
Do I have a motion?
I like to make a motion, if we're making a motion, that we accept this, or whatever it is I gotta do.
We're getting to be such a team that you're anticipating what I'm gonna say.
Yes.
That's always a good sign. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution six four two nine? Is the resolution to adopt?
Second.
Yeah, I already made, I made that.
Revised Workplace Harassment Policy five point one zero point zero six zero P. Director Green moves, Director Holland seconds. The adoption of Resolution six four two nine. Is there any board discussion? And is there any public comment?
No.
Seeing as there is none, the board will now vote on Resolution six four two nine, resolution to adopt revised workplace harassment policy five point one zero point zero six zero P. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes? All, all opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution six four two nine is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Weinberg unofficially voting.
Yes.
Thank you.
Shall I keep going?
Yes, we'll go. Yes, we'll go for the second reading. Next, we'll consider the second reading, two policy revisions. Director Brum Edwards, will you please introduce the two proposed recisions before I ask for a motion?
Thank you, Chair DePass. And this first one is really in honor of Director Scott, because I think if you read it, the first one, policy that we're, we, the Policy Committee recommended rescinding or deleting is a policy relating to definitions. It was adopted in 1971 and amended in 2002. It has such insightful definitions of Portland Public Schools, board members, and the school board. But clearly not something we need to have in a policy manual. So that's the first policy that we're recommending rescinding. The second is policy two point four zero point zero one zero, teacher membership on committee. Again, this was something, a policy that was adopted in '71 and amended in 2002. And this is actually a longstanding practice in the district, and we don't need a policy to tell us who should be included in committees. So those were both recommended by the Policy Committee. There's been a 21-day comment period, and no public comment.
Director Green?
Thank you, Chair DePass. I'd like to make a motion.
I'll second.
Do I have a motion in a second? I do. Director Green moves. Director Holland seconds. The, the adoption of Resolution 6430, is there any board discussion? And Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
The board will now vote on Resolution 6430, the resolution to rescind board policies one point zero, one point one zero point zero two zero P definitions, and two point four zero point zero one zero P teacher membership on committees. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. And are there any abstentions? Resolution 6430 is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with Student Representative Weinberg voting.
Yes.
Thank you. We're now going to go through the resolution to add an audit on ESL, English as Second Language Programs, to the board's audit plan. Director Constam, would you like to introduce this item?
I would, I would be happy to. So the Audit Committee is bringing forward just this one audit for our new audit plan. Basically, we're kind of syncing our cycle to get back in compliance with what calls, which calls for bringing forward a slate of adopted audits right at the time, to coincide with our fiscal year. So we've sort of been out of sync with that. We've been more tied to a school year. So we still have two audits from our audit plan that was approved by the board last year that have not been completed and really have hardly been undertaken yet. So those are still on our plates. That is the hardship transfer audit and the associated student body funds audit. So our team is hard at work on those. So we're just bringing forward at this time, we'll put audit to round out the slate for this year, and then we'll be back at it in the summer, in July, to discuss what we want to see on, for our internal performance auditors next year. So what you have here, as you can see in your materials, is to approve an audit plan that just has one audit, which is looking at our English as a second language programs. And the language here is to determine whether the district is compliant with obligations under Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, which states public schools must take affirmative steps to ensure that students with limited English proficiency can meaningfully participate in their educational programs and services. So I think most of you probably share my sentiment that what we're striving for is simply not compliance for English language learners, but success, personal success for all of our English language learners. So this will give us an opportunity to take a deep dive and look at our program offerings and our outcomes for our English language learners, which personally, I think is long overdue. We know that our English language learners in this district are not seeing the success that they should, and they're not something of English as a second language programming into the general education setting with the speed that they should be, I think it's safe to say. So I'm happy to take any questions. I feel really strongly that this is a personal, this is a important audit, and I appreciate the support from the rest of the Audit Committee in bringing this forward. And do we have any questions?
Directors, do we have any questions? No, I'm also really personally vested in seeing the outcome of this audit. It's an issue that's really important to me, having attended school where it wasn't in my first language. And also just really supportive of seeing, you know, these students that come to our district be as successful as they can be. So thank you for sharing that with us, Director Constam. Do I have a motion in a second to adopt Resolution 6428, resolution to approve the proposed internal performance audit plan? That would be of the ESL programs.
I make the motion.
Second.
Director Green moves. Director Constam and Director Green.
I'm trying to get in on the action, guys.
Yeah. You're too slow. We'll, we'll put you down for Constam and Holland's both seconded, so everybody gets their name on a piece of paper. Is there any board discussion? And Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
The board will now vote on Resolution 6428, the resolution to approve the proposed internal performance audit plan. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All those opposed, please indicate by saying no. And are there any abstentions? Resolution 6428 is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with Student Representative Weinberg voting.
Yes.
Yes. Great.
And Superintendent, I just wanted to say thank you, because the staff, my understanding is that the staff has been not only accommodating to our internal performance auditor on all the audits, but particularly in beginning to think about and scope out this audit. But I think it's safe to say they've been enthusiastic, agree that this is an area where we need to take all kinds of different deep dives and have different perspectives on what's working and what's not working. So thanks to your staff for helping, helping there.
Well, this is an important area for us to focus on, so we welcome it.
Excellent. We'll now move to the amendment of the fiscal year 2021-22 budget for school district number one J, Multnomah County, Oregon. Superintendent Gerro, would you please introduce this next item?
I'll gladly introduce our CFO, Nolberto Delgado, who is here live and in person.
Thank you, thank you. Hopefully, everyone's doing well this evening. How exciting. Talk about a budget amendment, right? This is, this is what it's all about. No, I'm just kidding.
We should have put you first.
Amazing.
A budget amendment that's coming forward from increased revenues is always.
I was going to highlight the amazing work that's been happening at Jefferson with all our high schools and with Dr. Renard and Dr. Proctor talked about, right? That's, that's where it happens. That, that is exactly what we're all here for.
Takes money to buy land, though.
And so that's why I'm here. Really, opportunity to present to you all the resolution to amend the current budget. And during the course of the year, there's transactions that transpire, there's a budget that gets adopted, and throughout the year, changes happen, whether it's additional revenues or additional expenditures, or just shifting between accounts. And so it's a routine and common process to come forth through the board and submit an amendment to the budget, and sometimes there may be a second amendment or a third amendment, but this is our first amendment, or is amendment number one. And so with, with this proposed amendment, our goal is to align appropriations and expenditures and resources based on what's transpired thus far. And in addition to that, to follow Oregon local budget law, which allows us to do this, and there are specific guidelines in how we do this. So I wouldn't just kind of give a voiceover over the memo. I won't do a deep dive into any of the tables, but obviously more than welcome to. And, and so really, I think the biggest one to highlight is our general fund. It's Fund 100, and there is a transaction of $400 million there. So I think that's like, wow, that's $400 million. But there's, there's a reason, rhyme and reason for that. And that's related to our PERS bond. So we had a refunding of our PERS bond, and one would then say, well, hey, how come isn't that, why isn't that in our debt funding service or in our debt fund, which would be lines 300? So I promise you, I'm not going to geek out on this, but just from the perspective of what's happening, there's some very specific accounting guidance and recommendations from the Oregon Department of Education into how we manage this transaction. So we do see $400 million coming into the general fund, but that's really, think about like deferred compensation for retirement benefits. It's kind of like a way to think about it versus actual expenditures to then go do what you'd normally do in the general fund, which is not the case. And then there is a correlating expenditure in, in Fund 300, which accounts for that $400 million. So I think to, to really sum it up, the general fund increased by about $3 million, not $400. At the end of the day, right, there's some technical accounting that we need to do. When we wrapped up our audit, we then also had the opportunity, we wrapped up our audit in December, we now had updated financials. So as you go through our, our amendment, there's a lot of true-ups, essentially reconciling, okay, well, you actually had this much left or this little adjustments to account for. So a lot of those transactions are recorded in the amendment, in addition to additional transactions that have happened in the special revenue fund. The special revenue fund, you may recall, accounts for our ESAR funding, our student investment account. So when the year began, we started with an adopted budget, and a few months later, or excuse me, a few weeks later, there was additional revenue that came in through the student investment account. That's updated. There's been some transactions and refunding with FEMA, and so a lot of those are also recorded. In addition to, as the year progressed, we were responding to ESAR, making adjustments with, okay, well, we're going to use ESAR funding to support purchasing tents for schools or doing things like that. So a lot of that got moved around. And so this amendment represents those transactions. So I'll stop there and just open it up for questions.
Board Directors, do we have questions?
I don't have any questions, just a statement that my friend, Nolberto, when he says he geeks out over these numbers, he truly geeks out over these numbers. And he, he combs through stuff with the fine-tooth comb, and he goes back again, and he gets extremely excited, more so than anybody I know about numbers and equations. And so I just want y'all to know that he, he did us all a favor by giving us the nuts and bolts of this thing, because he could really, really dial this in at a moment's notice.
I have the spreadsheet ready.
I told you at a moment's notice, he could dial this thing in.
I can filter by fun and give you more details. My undergrad was in chemistry, so I just then just also love, like, detail, so we can talk about cell geometry and balancing, you know.
Complicating matters.
Some cross-dimensional analysis. So this, right, it's, it's an opportunity to do that.
I appreciate the art and the science behind the, the memo was really helpful to understand the comings and goings, if you will.
And one thing I will also note, as part of the Oregon local budget law, we're required to publish the information. And I will share that we published it once, and we realized that we dropped three zeros out of that $400 million transaction. So it's like, hey, $400,000, not a bad day. That was wrong. So we did republish it in accordance with local law and really just being able to share that we added the three zeros. So it was a typo. Team caught it. We made that correction. And so from a publication perspective, we made sure to catch that and do that, and we'll ensure that doesn't happen again, at least, right, the goal with being the case. Yes.
Why don't you then move the money actually?
Correct, yes, yes. It was a typo, not like missing money back somewhere. Right.
We appreciate that radical transparency.
Go ahead, Director Constam?
I said, we appreciate that radical transparency.
I do as well. I, it's noted, and it's always, you know, like algebra, it's good to see the thinking and the rationale. Is the, does the Oregon law require that we publish this in like a local business journal or?
We, in a wide enough publication, so we publish in the Oregonian.
Okay.
And so we had published Sunday.
Okay, great, thank you. And thank you for catching that three zeros. That's a lot.
Wanted to tell the accurate story, as required by law.
Yeah, no, that's fantastic. Do I have a motion in a second to adopt resolution?
I make the motion that we.
Second.
Director Green moves. Director Holland seconds, the adoption of Resolution 6437. That's the amendment to the fiscal year 2021-22 budget for the school district, Multnomah, one J, Multnomah County, Oregon. Is there any board discussion?
Just have a question. This follows on the conversation we had before the board meeting, and I appreciate you sharing the $400 million, that it's not just all of a sudden we have $400 million more, because I think that could be how it read, if you didn't have the expert commentary from staff to explain what that was. And I'd ask about the, normally called reserves, but you're either the beginning fund balance or the ending fund balance. And I'm just, it's 88%. Is the, are you, are we basing that on the without the PERS money?
Correct. So our calculation, the 88 million is essentially, and that's in table one or table two in the attachments, it's essentially based off the 770 million what our general fund was, was budgeted. So our, that fund balance, we're calculating it off that general fund.
And then, I guess, and this is more just for laypeople like, like me, or for taxpayers, is, okay, so if our budget was whatever, 779, and then we had this $400 million dropped on, on it, when we go to the historical, because I think this is always an important conversation in Oregon, like, what's the historical level of investments and what's the baseline that we're operating under? Like, it, we're not going to have this blip that all of a sudden goes up and everybody then continues asking, even though right now you put it in the general fund, for purposes of like historical trends, it would be without the PERS funds?
Yeah, we would have to footnote it and make like a note calling that out and making the distinction regarding, it's like your, your classic managerial budget versus your accrual budget, and like the distinction between what do you, what can you really work with versus what are, what are the accounting standards and GASP tell you how to record it and document it?
So we'd probably use it in the future without it for our just general graphs?
Yes, that would be the goal. Yep, to have these conversations, when we look at trends, we would just carve that out and, and make a note.
Great. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, so Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
So the board will now vote on Resolution 6437, amendment to the fiscal year 2021-22 budget for school district number one J, Multnomah County, Oregon. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6437 is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with Student Representative Weinberg voting.
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any other business at this time before we adjourn? We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Good night.
Good night.